The City Council, October twenty-fourth, meaning to order.
I don't think they can hear you.
All right, we have Pastor Mark Brennan here from Refuge Church to lead us in a prayer.
Council President, he's not here, and we're gonna pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing this group together in this wonderful place to help them make good decisions for our city. We're all blessed to live in Madison and work together as a team, and we will keep forging on in your name, and I pray. And I pray for this group and our council people and our mayor. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, please join me in the pledge. Can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears. Council President Powell. I'm sorry. Council President Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Here.
Councilmember Seaford.
Here.
We have a quorum, so we'll move forward. Are there any changes to the printed agenda? If not, we'll move forward with what we have, and I'll ask for approval amendments for October tenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? No, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is presentations. We have two, and first we have the American Legion.
Good evening, Council and President, Mayor. So, we're gonna have the opportunity tonight to make a, acknowledge some of our young adults. But I wanted to speak to you real quickly about what's going on with the American Legion. Uh, we're celebrating one hundred and thirty, one hundred and third year of the American Legion this year. Um, and one of the big, big events, one of the big significant milestones was a toxic exposure, uh, benefit that now had been gone through the legislation and taking care of our veterans that had those kinds of exposures such as burn pit exposure that took place during, uh, the twelve wars. So, um, also, um, we're pushing this year and for the next two years, a Be the One campaign, which is be the one to say something. We've got still a mental illness and suicide issues with our veterans, and we're wanting to make sure that, uh, that nobody's left behind and forgotten of. And if someone sees something, say something. You know, we've got those similar campaigns for other events, other organizations. We've got one for the American Legion to take care of our fellow veterans. So, we've got some major accomplishments in the state this year, too. We had the National Oratorical Winner. So, that was over thirty thousand dollars, and, uh, it's made that young lady, uh, to be able to achieve that. We haven't done that in about seventeen years, I believe, last time we did that. But, uh, that was a very significant event to do in our state. Also, Mayor Kelly Hughes recognized this, there's a National World Series of Baseball, and, um, Alabama won at Troy, the school from, uh, the team from Troy, Alabama, won the national, the National World Series, which was fantastic. Uh, we've got about seventeen thousand members, uh, in the American Legion in the state of Alabama. Not as large, not as significant as some states, but, uh, for us to pull out those two major, major programs off with our youth is quite amazing. Uh, post-wise, uh, we have just formed a five oh one C three. Um, typical American Legion falls under category five oh one C nineteen, but we recognize the need and the ability to do campaign, I mean, to do fundraising, uh, through a five oh one C three, uh, nonprofits, so we have formed one. Uh, as of since COVID's passed or significantly reduced, we're making many new home visits that, uh, we, is a new, new campaign within a, within a post. We're continuing to do baseball, oratorical, uh, Boy Scout and Girl Scout sponsorships, JRO TC sponsorships. Uh, we're very closely with all of those with many of our youth programs. We're up to about three hundred and forty members, which means we, our posts grew this year. And that is, again, a significant milestone for the post, considering the, uh, uh, notability to meet public, meet as groups as much as we have done in the past. Uh, Veterans Week is coming up. You're starting, the week actually gonna be starting on the fourth, the fourth of November, which we either prayer breakfast at the YMCA here in town, which, uh, many of you participated in, and the public gets to come out, and we will have a good showing of our post there. And then, uh, finally, we're forming a Sons of the American Legion. So, there's four major organizations within the, within the American Legion. There's the American Legion, there's the Auxiliary, there's Sons of the American Legion, and the American Legion Riders. So, what we don't have, what we won't have is the Riders. We only have the other three organizations. Um, with that said, I want to bring Jane Downs, she's my vice commander and president of the Auxiliary of Post Two, uh, Two Two Nine, and she's gonna have a few words to talk about.
Mister Mayor, can I hear me? Councilmembers?
Yeah.
Um, so it's my honor to present to you the twenty twenty-two delegates, um, that went to the, uh, the Boys and Girls State Convention at Troy University this summer, and we wanted to bring them, uh, before you to honor them. We're gonna take them before the school board this Thursday as well, so that they can get honored that they're there. So, just real brief about where these kids came from. Um, there were forty-four, so Boys State and Girls State, you know, I told you this last year, it's a little bit different. Forty-four boys from the county went down to Troy. Of them, seven came from our schools, Bob Jones and James Clemmons. Um, we had nine girls that went, I'm sorry, thirteen girls applied this year, um, for the girls, and, um, we picked two from each state, or, I'm sorry, two from each of the schools. Until we hit six hundred kids in our junior classes, the number's gonna stay at two, so I hope we never get to send more than two girls. Uh, but we had excellent candidates, um, up thirty percent from the year before, which was our first year to be able to send the girls. So, um, with, oh, and I wanted also mention, last year's class, we had outstanding delegates, you know, and these are, these kids are fantastic, they're student leaders. Two of the four girls we chose, um, went to West Point.
Oh, wow.
So, they're continuing to serve. So, right now, I wanna bring up the boys and girls. Um, first, I wanna bring up the boys that are here. Uh, Jackson Yamagoshi. Jackson's from James Clemmons, and he served as city senator for City Ten. Jackson, you can just come stand up over here. Jackson also won, um, an award for the most outstanding citizen in the Senate. And Noah Little. Noah's from Bob Jones High School. He was the Hou- House Representative for City Six, as well as, uh, Supreme Court Seat Seven, and he worked on the Boys State Newsletter. Come on up here, Noah. Andrew Millar. Andrew's from James Clemmons. And Andrew served on the Judicial Special Interest Group. And Nathan Tate from Bob Jones. Nathan served on the State House of Representatives. So, these are, uh, four of the, the boys that went. I'll bring my ladies up. Like I said, um, two girls from Bob Jones, two from JC. We have two tonight. Audrey Groger from, um, Bob Jones High School, and Audrey ran for Attorney General. And then I have, uh, Katie LaFerrera from Bob Jones. She was a mayor of one of the mock cities.
Right.
And finally, Elizabeth Swain of James, James Clemmons. She was the State Director of Communications, and Elizabeth won the Good Citizen Award. Um, so before we get a picture with you, hopefully, Mister Mayor, um, I asked a couple of the kids to say a couple of words. So, Elizabeth, would you like to go first?
You guys, you just talk, yeah, yeah.
Hi, uh, first and foremost, thank you so much for having me here, um, and thank you to the Auxiliary and the American Legion for just really providing this opportunity for all of us. For me, Girls State serves as a reminder of the beautiful diversity that exists not just in Madison, but in our state as a whole. From girls like me who go to big cities like James Clemmons, to the girls at smaller ones like those in Uphaula. Every experience, every person that I met was a chance to connect with perspectives that otherwise I wouldn't have been able to embrace. In a time when our country is so politically polarized, I am forever grateful to Girls State for giving me a chance to really meet with people on both sides of the aisle. Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely.
Good evening. I just wanna say, um, for me, Boys State was just a great opportunity to meet people from all over the state and get to see people from different backgrounds. It was really interesting to see how they all had different perspectives on different things. And it was just really cool for me, 'cause I was in the Senate, to see how they did things and, like, the process that went through in getting the bills and having it processed. Thank you.
And thanks to the American Legion, they continue to, and you got to see from the list they gave us, just, uh, fully engaged with our city in every form and fashion, and we truly appreciate what you guys continue to do. It's value to our city that we, uh, that we benefit from.
Very good. Next, we have, uh, Mit- Mitzi Adams.
I have to follow that. Good luck to all those young people, and I hope you, um, are encouraged to go into science. So, it's that time again. We have a couple of eclipses coming up, and I've created a, a, an information sheet, and I have some hard copies that you are welcome to, and I believe Lisa has them. But basically, there are two eclipses coming up. They're separated in time by six months. The first one will be about a year from now, on October fourteenth. That one is an annular eclipse, and the annular eclipse occurs because the moon is a little bit farther away from Earth than for a total eclipse. And when that happens, it appears to be smaller in the sky, and so there's an annulus of light that can shine from around the edge of the sun, as indicated in the figure on the bottom right, the, um, image, second image from the, from the right side. And it, it's a really, really interesting eclipse to see, but it's basically just a hyped-up partial eclipse. So, if any of you have seen a partial eclipse, you have to use special protection for your eyes the entire time. Whereas during a total eclipse, you can take your protection off during totality. The annular eclipse is really interesting if you're on the path of annularity. If you're in the middle of it, then you'll have a, a symmetric ring or annulus around the edges of the moon. So, you know, this is not gonna be the same as in twenty seventeen. But as a community, we still have the opportunity to recognize the, the both of the eclipses, which will be partial here. The total will be ninety percent, I believe, which will still get us some darkening, but it's not gonna be nearly as dramatic as if you see a total eclipse. And you can't just drive thirty minutes to the north to see the total either. You're gonna have to drive farther. But we could still promote the eclipses as an event for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and arts learning, and hopefully encourage folks to become interested, because these two eclipses are gonna happen six months apart. They're gonna crisscross the United States, so millions of people are gonna see these eclipses and, and will be in the paths of annularity and totality. So, um, on the second page, if we can go to page two, I've included some tips on safely observing the sun. You know, these can be used anytime to safely observe the sun. And there are some areas for the path of annularity, showing the percent of annularity, and areas, that is cities, where you can observe the path of totality. Um, there are references on the handout, and there are websites where you can get a lot more information. In particular, the American Astronomical Society's website has a great, great section of resources that include places where you can purchase eclipse glasses and eclipse cards that have been tested and meet the safety requirements. So, I encourage you to, um, take a look at the flyer, um, if, if you so desire, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me or email me. That's probably the better way.
Very good. Thank you, Miss Adams.
Thank you. Next is public comments, and we have a couple of people that had signed up, and we'll start with, uh, Ms. Jocelyn Bra- Bra- Brower.
Hey, Jocelyn, sorry, ma'am.
There, Jocelyn Brower, Taylor's Crossing. Uh, good evening, Council and Mayor. I'll start off with a thank you for the light at Hardiman and Burgreen Road that was added to the capital improvement project list. As noted in the meeting with Planning and Engineering, I want this area to be safe, not only, uh, so I can turn left out of my driveway, but also for the high school students driving and walking to James Clemmons High School, and for the soon-to-be-bout elementary school students doing the same. I saw two students recently walking in the gully on the side of the road trying to get to school. These are narrow roads and lots of large construction trucks taking up most of the road. Unfortunately, I read in the proposal for services that pedestrian accommodations will not be provided as part of this task, since there is not currently any sidewalks at the intersection that would allow for connectivity. Um, questions, um, should I speak with the school board about adding additional monies to make it safe for children to cross the street in this location? Um, or do you have any other suggestions for me? I also noted when speaking with Planning and Engineering that we might need an additional warning light at the blind corner as you approach the light. People sometimes fly around that corner. Um, next, I want to address a work session, a minute stated September seventh, that I just recently found out about, thanks to a document that iVote Madison had saved, but is not currently on the city's website due to the redesign in progress. Stating the facts, I want to note that I have you on camera, Council President Shaw, as a volunteer recording this public session for iVote Madison. I showed up because this was the first work session since March that many citizens have been waiting for. In the past, there's been a work session once a month, which I have usually attended. I asked before you went directly into executive session, Council President Shaw, will you come out of executive session at some point and discuss other things? Council President Shaw stated, "We don't plan on it at this time. Uh, we really don't." I asked again, "You are only doing the exec- executive session?" Council President Shaw responded, "Yes, ma'am." So, what happened after that? The minute stated that you all voted to come out of executive session at eight P M. The minute state, you discussed the Board of Education appointment, but there are no notes as to what you discussed. Citizens, myself included, would like to know how you chose the last school board member and why. That's why I showed up. That's why other citizens showed up at previous meetings to ask about the B O E appointment process. I heard experience. I would like to know specifically what experience will be most helpful for the other board members and superintendent moving forward. I listened to two rounds of interviews over the years, and I had a good feel for why applicants were chosen. I wish I had that same knowledge this time around. It would be appreciated, but certainly not expected, because that's just the way citizens are treated when they try to participate in local government in Madison. All that talk of transparency last election was just that talk.
So, I'll, I'll address that. A- after we came out of executive session, there was, all of us were in this room, and two or three people started talking about the board, the, the school board, and I said, "We can't talk in here as a group." Brian was still here, our clerk was still here, Mara had already left. And I said, "If we're gonna talk through this, we have to either, either do it formally, or y'all have to, uh, disperse. We can't do that in here." I called Mara back. Mara came back, talked to our lawyer. I said, "Can, can we legally discuss this?" He said, "Absolutely." It was discussed. It was not planned at all. It wasn't like we were hiding behind a cloak of darkness to discuss this. Mara left. But I said, "If we're gonna talk through this, we have to do it legally, or we have to break up." And everybody said, "No, we, we wanna talk about it," so, so we did. Our, our lawyer stayed in here, our clerk stayed. We talked for fifteen minutes, and then we left. But we wanted to be legal. It wasn't like we were, we were trying to hide anything. It was not on our agenda at all to do that, but it happened. And, and, and that's, like I said, Mara had already left. We called Mara to come back. We said, "Hey, do you wanna discuss this?"
I left and did not come back.
And Paul was gone. It, it, it was not something that we scheduled to do. Like I said, we don't plan on it. But everybody was here, and the discussion started, and I said, "We, if we do this, we have to be legal, or we have to break up in groups of three or less." And that's how that happened.
So, I'll, I got a question, um, on your first one where you said the intersection, and I'll take responsibility for finding out who you should go to. Which intersection are you talking about? The one at Hardiman? At Burgreen, okay, and you're trying to figure out how they would get from where to where? With? Uh-huh. Okay. From the, from different subdivisions on the, that side over there? Okay. I'll take, I'll take responsibility for finding that for you.
Maybe a crosswalk?
Well, and again, it's most likely gonna be in a couple of different phases.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and so I think that's part of it. I will get answers and get back to you and let you know who you go to.
Yeah, I mean, this room was o- I mean, it'll be open. Yes, ma'am. Okay, well, no- normally, we have them in one thirty, so if it was here, uh, I'm sorry, but yes, we, we will tell you to come back in. To dismiss. Yes, ma'am.
I was here for that, and then I left, and I got a call literally when I had just turned out of, onto Hughes Road, and I basically went- And I basically went up to the cemetery, turned around, and came back. So it was just a few minutes after. But I will say that I don't think anyone has any problem that when we have an executive session, and if we have to go into one thirty, we can look in the lobby. I think we're all in agreement that we'll look in the lobby and see if anybody's there and tell you we're back.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Ms. Margie Daly.
Talk about the number one is the thirty-eight million dollars for the exit ramp off the ghost town, Town Madison. I actually have never been there, and on Saturday, my husband and I took a ride through. The roads aren't finished. The parking lot is gravel. There are not a hundred active tenants making all this money. We have one exit ramp. This is ridiculous for the proposed one hundred tenants by 2024 that we are going to take a thirty-eight million dollar bond. Well, we don't have proper lighting in my neighborhood. The trash isn't picked up anymore. The city services and the way you guys treat the constituents is horrible. I'm sorry, it's horrible. You don't even talk into your mics. I looked at the work session. Renee, your mic was up here. I mean, we literally can't hear you. Then, when you have a session and Mary Beth talks here, you can hear her all the way up there without a mic, but yet in the finance committee, we can't hear a word she says. So I mean, it's just a matter of, you guys work for us, the citizens. Everybody in City Hall, they are, work for the constituents, not for Mayor Finley or you guys up there. You know, this is why we should have a mayor, it turns off anyway. I'm getting too off on the subject. That is a ghost town. It doesn't support another bond of thirty-eight million dollars. The contingencies have not been met, and you're going to put it on the agenda for a first reading? Number seven is a statewide campaign to vote no on. And I'm hoping the people of Alabama speak up, and we get that no vote. But that's statewide, just to let you know. You have to have that, you have to have the county. Apparently, you think their votes are counted already. That I'm not sure on. And there's a third contingency. Oh, the publics. Now, if Breland didn't give us the Chick-fil-A that went through the council, what means, what makes you think he's going to give you the publics? And that is the only way you're going to pay for Town Madison. You're robbing Peter to pay Paul. And it's time to slow down on Town Madison, stop giving it every dime of tax dollars through 2049, and take care of your constituents. Let that development slow up a little. You got bales of hay at the end of the road where it just stops. You got mountains of clay dirt all over. There's a couple of residents occupied. There's one or two places that were busy on Saturday. Otherwise, it was a ghost town. It's like watching The Walking Dead over there. I mean, it's not time to throw another thirty-eight million dollar bond like a payday loan with the interest. Now, when we took our other bonds, I was all for it because they were such low interest. But what you're doing here is not low interest at all. And I really think you should consider your constituents and the needs of the neighborhoods before you continue to... It's not needed. You have one exit. It doesn't support another big bond like that at high interest. I had other things to say, but that, oh, that's, I think my time is...
Yes, ma'am. Next, Ms. Jennifer Coe.
Mr. President, I have the same, some of the same issues. I went to the finance committee meeting on Tuesday. Why are citizens being told to sit in chairs in the back against the wall? The committee members and department heads aren't speaking into the microphone. They are deliberately mumbling so citizens cannot hear what they're saying. Why aren't citizens allowed to have copies of the consent agenda and finance committee report? Finance Committee Chairman Bartlet deliberately denies citizens copies of all handouts. This is public information. Why is Madison Visionary Partners donating fifteen thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars to the city for a pavilion? It's been finished for months now. Why are we recycling money through M V P every two weeks? About the work session on Wednesday, why are we ratifying another funding agreement for Town Madison? This means we are borrowing eighty-five million because there were two bonds that were discussed. Why are we borrowing eighty-five more in bonds? This whole plan is predicated on the ballot amendment number seven passing on November eighth, which raises the statutory debt limit from twenty percent of the city's assets to fifty percent. The need for the flyover interchange versus going into more debt does not make fiscal sense. Otherwise, this project would have paid for itself already. There simply is not enough retail in Town Madison to support building that interchange. Why are we already, we're already ninety-three percent of the current statutory debt limit? Because in September of 2021, we were a hundred and fifty million nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, not, a hundred and fifty million in debt already. So anyway, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Heather Morgan, District Five, and I'm speaking on behalf of I Vote Madison tonight. I'm going to address something Ms. Jocelyn Brower mentioned, and I'll keep what you said in mind at the end. I'm going to read it. I'm going to start with a thank you because y'all are already getting it tonight. I want to thank you for now recording and archiving planning and city council meetings, but we think there needs to be more work done toward transparency and accessibility. And the microphones have been mentioned, and I have noticed that they have been in place lately for speakers when they're here, even for work sessions. But they just need to be reminded, myself reminded, to speak into it. Because if they're there and they're not speaking into it, we can't hear. Especially if we're recording and we're forced to be way over here. We don't have professional equipment. You know, we can't pick up a lot of that sound. It's a public meeting. We should be able to hear it. Lack of transparency with work sessions, especially as it pertains to the Board of Education appointment and what occurred on September seventh, as described by Ms. Brower, and the lack of work sessions being held in general is concerning. If the citizen in attendance on September seventh had not been told definitively that council would not return, I Vote Madison would have a recording of the meeting, of that discussion, and would have shared it with Madison residents. And we think this is a serious blow to transparency. At the very least, it gives the appearance of council trying to hide things from citizens. Council knew citizens wanted to be privy to the process, policies, and actions of their representatives related to school board appointment, because there have been many, many questions about this. But you chose, you voted on to come back in and have a meeting without, I mean, meetings, any kind of meeting has to be, a work session meeting has to be alert the public that it's happening. But you sent the public home and then kept having it. Now, even if it was legal, to me, it's unacceptable. It is not transparent. The small amount of work sessions this year is also a cause for concern. On September seventh, that was the first work session since March. By this time last year, there had been nine work sessions. Business is surely happening, so with so few work sessions, it's natural for students to ask when and where and among whom, among whom are having these discussions. These are very big decisions. So if council is just coming in and seeing it one time and making a decision, surely you'd want to ask questions, discuss it, and hopefully that's not happening in the dark. But it has the appearance of. Last week, we were only given a little more than twenty-four hours' notice about the work session. Now, that is legal, I think, from my understanding, you have at least twenty-four hours. But it just still doesn't seem acceptable. I can't imagine that this meeting was planned last minute because you had two speakers, you had somebody set up. And I think what we'd like to have is, I think citizens would rather have, oh, the meeting's canceled, you know, at the last minute, rather than, oh, we just find out about the last minute. And we can't record and make it transparent if we don't know about it. Like, we have lives, we have kids, you know, we're busy. But we think it should be available to everybody. And this was a big deal. A million, tens of millions of dollars were at stake. Big decisions, guest speakers, like I said. We make, we ask that you make the effort sooner. We hope you vote to release this recording, that recording. When you pick and choose what meetings to choose to let citizens see, it has the appearance that you want to hide some of them and not others. And we do ask that you go ahead, again, and record, archive, and even livestream these work sessions so everybody can see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move forward with the consent agenda finance committee report.
Can you move my microphone down so you can hear? Sorry. Okay. The finance committee met last week on October eighteenth. We discussed and reviewed the consent agenda items, and I'll have that for you in just a moment. We also discussed an RFP, issuing an RFP for banking services in early 2023. We've had the same bank doing our work since nineteen ninety-eight. And Roger Bellamy, our finance director, was there and thought it was a good time for us to go ahead and issue an RFP, compare rates, and see what we receive in response. But we would not be ready to do that until early 2023 because we're going to be working on our audit next. We also discussed ARPA funding. As many of you know, Madison has received ARPA funding but has not designated that funding. We've received just a little over five million dollars at the finance committee meeting. We had Chief Bailey and Chief Gandy discuss a need for a fire station and police substation on the south side of I-565. The reasons that they have given for needing a fire station and police substation out there is to improve response times, a high percentage of those calls are EMS calls, the growing Town Madison area, plans to make Town Madison an entertainment district. The fire station would need to be big enough to hold three bays and a second ladder truck, according to Chief Bailey. And Chief Gandy also added that a substation for police would have our officers on bikes in the Town Madison area. After discussing that, we're hoping to have a resolution for the full council to consider at the November fourteenth meeting, and then that will get us on our way to allocating the ARPA funds. And then I have the consent agenda items for your approval. I'd like to move to approve, but I just noted that I think there's an extra zero under the donation under item F. Mayor, was that seventeen thousand?
We were hoping for that seventeen million, though.
I think it's seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand dollars. I just want to correct that number on item F. That was very generous of Representative Ball, and I want to thank him for that. And with that, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is second. Is there any other discussion? Not going to get a vote, please.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzin?
Motion passes. Next is presentation of reports. I'm going to start with the mayor.
All right, and I'll start by asking for council approval of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-two dash two ninety dash R for a ratification of the agreement with Smart Dollar for a debt reduction program for our employees. And this would be a cost of ten thousand two hundred and one dollars for an annual payment to be out of our departmental budget.
Move to approve?
I got it.
Motion is second.
You have to make a motion in a second, and then he asks for discussion.
Did we get that? Yes.
Motion is second.
Okay. So what that is, is the Dave Ramsey program that is, that will be made available to each and every one of our employees. And it's not required, but it's, again, trying to help our employees, especially as we transition through some of what's happening in the world right now when it comes to inflation, a lot of things that are going on. It's just basically a management program for debt, for planning for your future, and it's one that we're going to offer each and every one of them if you guys approve that tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion?
I, well, let me just say, I think that's a great thing. I've been through Dave Ramsey twice. I guess I didn't listen the first time. But from that standpoint, and just speaking directly to everybody here, I mean, if you got employees here, or you have employees at any company, if they're not, if they're working and they're in debt and things, their focus is not always on what they're doing. Their focus is on the stress at home, their stress in those things. And actually, one of the number-one leaders in divorce today is finances. And so if you have employees that are out of debt and they're focusing on work and they're happy at home, guess what? They're more efficient at work, better employees, they're happier, and they're happier at home. So Paul, thank you for taking a step. And I know you work with H R and other folks and invest in our employees so that it actually gives back to our citizens who we do work for, a better employee that now doesn't have that stress at home of debt and finances. Because anybody that has a biblical there, the borrower is slave to the lender. So, thank you, Paul.
Mm-hmm.
Can we get a vote, please?
Excuse me. Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzin?
Motion passes.
All right. And then a couple of different things. I'm just getting back from the Big Ten Mayor's meeting. They had that in Auburn. It was yesterday and this morning. Two different things that kind of come out of that. One is Anaya's law. You know, we talked about that. It's ballot, on the ballot, it's number one. It's amendment number one. We're asking that you vote yes on that. What that would give is judges more discretion for revoking bond for those who have committed dangerous possibilities of crimes. You know, Anaya was someone who was killed in 2019 by someone who had, should have been in jail, and the judge didn't have the ability to keep that person in jail. So it was one that, from a position standpoint, we take, a voting yes that gives judges more discretion to help make our community safer. It's focused on all, every, everyone, every police department will tell you, those folks that have committed those crimes need to stay in jail, and that's what we would ask for. Secondly, we did have discussion on the marijuana dispensaries and the different things that are coming to Alabama. It is something that most municipalities are looking at, and Huntsville's already passed it. I think Orange Crossroads maybe was another one. So it will be something that we look to bring to council at some point as far as the discussion. We have had a couple of folks come and meet with us. It's going to happen in the state of Alabama. It's just a matter of where. And when it does happen, it's going to be regulated to the ninth, but it's also going to be a huge tax revenue for municipalities. So it will be something that we bring to you guys at some point for a discussion on do we want to make this available for someone who met the proper zoning in the city of Madison. On a far more positive note, Celebrate Madison is Friday, November fourth. It's at Toyota Field. It will be open to the public. We're excited about that. Gates will open at five thirty, and I think we'll start the celebration like at quarter till seven. Gives me the ability, as mayor, to tell our entire community, no cost to the community to come. As a matter of fact, there's coupons for some to get food, but the ability to share and celebrate our city. And so it's at Friday, November fourth, Toyota Field, open to everyone. Please, please come on. And then lastly, I'll say, going back to the Madison Visionary Partners, again, that was a 501(c)(3) that was set up to support the city, to give people the ability to support our city with monies that they'd like to give, that in turn they'd receive a tax benefit from. I know that organization raised, I think, over half a million dollars for Kids Kingdom, which is, we're in a revitalization position right now. And then folks like the Rotary, folks want to give their money through that. So it is a benefit to our city and one that we're going to continue to utilize to support our city. With that said, that's all I have.
Very good. Decision number one.
Very good. Thank you. I just want to echo what Councilmember Seifert said about Dave Ramsey. Our entire family has been through that program. They have a program for, at the time, our son and daughter were teenagers, and it's a huge benefit. And I'm very thankful that you all were proactive in providing that to our employees, especially in this time of inflation. I do have one picture that I want to share. So what's wrong with this picture? If you have received emails, I've received emails and phone calls and texts about some cable installation that is going on in Madison where cable lines have been cut, water lines have been cut, and in Greg's district, a gas line was cut. So this is just not good here. So I wanted to take this opportunity. A resident in my district sent me this picture and said, "What can we do about this?" And I said, "Well, I know they're not going to let me go and move that box." So I reached out to Chief Bailey, and I said, "Chief, we've got a situation here." And he was right on it, and fixed, got... and fix, got it fixed quickly, spoke with the contractor, and so I realized that there are several of you in Madison that are having issues with cable installations. So just reach out to us because, um, we're, we're trying to stay on top of it, but there are definitely situations like this that we want to be aware of. And then the second situation that I wanted to speak to is, um, signs in the roundabout. Uh, realtors, ACT prep companies, mattress sales, and yard sales have all had signs in the roundabout. And so I just want to ask everyone here, and everyone watching online, and everyone in the world, to please not put a sign in the roundabout. It, it's an intersection of a lot of distraction. There's a lot of, lot going on, uh, some people are not comfortable with the roundabout. Adding a sign in the center of the roundabout or in the right of way, um, is just inviting a possible accident. So I just want to say on behalf of everyone that goes through the roundabout, um, and in the area, uh, to keep it safe and not put any signs in that area, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Decision number five.
Uh, first, I want to congratulate all of the girl state and boy state delegates who are here this evening. I don't think I've ever shared this in a public meeting, but I was a girl state delegate when I was in high school and was girl state attorney general, and so I have a lot of respect for that program and congratulate, uh, everyone associated with it. Um, I just have one, uh, item for clarification because I want to, I want to make sure that everyone understands there's been some people banding about comments about Amendment seven seventy-two and the Amendment seven that's coming up on the ballot, and there's been some confusion that this amendment that's coming up on the ballot, Amendment seven, changes the debt limit. It does not. The debt limits are already set and provided for in Amendment seven seventy-two, and our city has a, access to that debt limit and could qualify if we have an infrastructure project that, uh, would lead to economic development. So we already can qualify, and we're well under that fifty percent debt limit. I clarified this with our, uh, finance director. So Amendment seven will not change the limit. It changes how quickly we can get to the bond market, but it's not going to do, uh, anything in terms of what the city of Madison might decide to do because we're well underneath the fifty percent margin, and we would already qualify with the project that we're considering this evening, and that's all I have.
Decision number six.
Uh, this last week, I was invited over to, uh, Adam Kettle's home. He wanted me to look at the lights out in Victoria. He was absolutely right in that, wow, of the road was completely dark, and you could not see cars. Just the next door neighbor, there was a complete darkness. I mean, you really, the lighting there was very poor. And it is true, as the kids start going to school in the morning, walking, it's still going to be dark. So, um, it was a very clear indication that we do need to be addressing this issue of the light not being adequate. Now, whether we can go back and put back old lights until something can be fixed, or if you can put diffusers on them or something, but this was a very clear illustration that there is a lighting issue going on in a lot of our subdivisions because the poles are so far apart. Um, yeah. So, I don't know. What is it that we are able to do, Mayor?
I'm out of talk in my head.
It's exactly as we told him. We're going to finish the project that we started, and we're putting down, um, every area of concern that we have and making a list. What, what he's going to need on Victoria is additional light posts, if that's what we decide to do. But that's phase two. We have to finish phase one.
Do we have a timeline on what phase one is yet?
Well, phase one should be done by the end of the year.
So.
That's what they're telling us. Now, whether that actually happens at that timeframe, again, they're doing a great job. They're getting through fairly quickly. We'll then address, you know, give, give, that's the, on the list, and if there's someone else that we need to look at, we can look at adding posts. But he has more light coming out of each one of those than he did before.
Well, it may be, but if it's, if it's directed in there literally dark, you know, areas in front of homes where, I mean, it was obvious if somebody was trying to steal something from their car, no one could see it.
Sure, so, so we can, but, 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 I mean, they bought, they, that, that subdivision has been that way since it was in the county and then brought it into the city. So. Hold on, hold on, shh, you can't talk from there. Stop, can't do that. Um, and so we're looking, give it, send it to us, and we'll look at yours, too. That'd be one that we'd look at. So if we need to look as a city to do additional things, we will, but we're going to finish what we started as far as getting it through, and his, Victoria is on the list of projects that we will look at.
Okay, and it should be shortly after the beginning of the year, hopefully, that we can start addressing these issues?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I would like to thank those that spoke earlier about transparency. Thank you for holding us accountable. Um, also, will there be a time later to discuss more on this breathing thing? I have a couple of questions. Should I wait on that? Okay, then I will, and happy Halloween.
Second.
I don't have anything tonight.
There's no board committee appointments tonight. Uh, public hearings, we have a couple.
Uh, the Revenue Department, we have one public hearing this evening. We've received a request for an on- or off-premise beer and wine license from Goodland Porthouse LLC, doing business, uh, is the same. Uh, one-two-one-one-zero Cannonline Road, Suite A. Uh, this is, you know, up there at the, uh, Public Shopping Center on Cannonline Road. Uh, the reason we're having this public hearing is the business recently has been sold, and, uh, everything is in order for this to be considered.
I'd like to open the, uh, public hearing. Anyone like to address councilor or mayor about this? If not, we'll close public hearing, and that's for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Is there any discussion? And can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears, I'm sorry, Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzin?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Your first, uh, planning public hearing is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two thirty. This is the zoning of property located at one fifty-one Forest Drive. You can see it, um, marked there on the north side of Forest Drive. Uh, the, um, zoning is going to be done in, um, in conjunction with an annexation, which is later on your agenda. Planning Commission staff are supporting, uh, the zoning of this property. It is occupied by a single-family home. Uh, there was no, uh, concerns expressed at the Planning Commission meeting.
All right, like to open the, uh, public hearing. Anyone like to address councilor or mayor about this?
Is it just the annexation of one single home? Does, it says R one?
Yeah.
A, low density?
Yes.
Is that what it is? Just one home?
It's, it's one house.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
One lot. You betcha.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the, uh, public hearing. That's for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? And can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzin?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next public hearing item is for proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-two, and this is, and this is to, uh, rezone, um, almost ninety-eight acres, uh, from agriculture to TND, uh, which is our traditional neighborhood development, uh, zoning category. This property is already in the city, so this is, uh, just a rezoning request. The property is on the south side of Huntsville-Brown's Ferry between the Village at Oakland Springs and Morris Drive. As part of our TND zoning, the zoning ordinance requires that an applicant submit a concept, concept plan, which is shown there on the screen. Uh, the concept plan shows three hundred and eighty-two for sale, um, lots. It includes thirty-three thousand square feet of commercial space, twenty-six acres of open space, of which twenty-four point two four, two-five acres would be dedicated to the city for a future park. And it also shows connections to existing and future, um, development, um, which is required, um, by the city. Uh, staff and the Planning Commission are supporting this zoning request because the zoning is compatible with adjacent zoning and uses. Uh, the concept plan includes a mix of housing types, which is consistent with our West Side Master Plan and our city goals. Uh, the project would add to our commercial base. Uh, the concept plan is consistent with connectivity goals outlined in our transportation plan, and our recreation master plan calls for a, a large park in the vicinity of this, which would be, um, part of that twenty-four acres that is proposed to be dedicated to the city. Uh, you'll recall that you approved a development agreement for, um, this property at your last meeting. Uh, there was no, uh, opposition, um, with respect to this request of the Planning Commission. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance.
Like to open the, uh, public hearing. Anyone like to address councils?
You weren't very close to the mic then. No, 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 you're good, believe me. I'm just having fun, Margie.
TND stands for traditional neighborhood development, as I mentioned at the outset. It is a zoning category that the city created back in about twenty fourteen. It was initially created specifically for the Village at Oakland Springs. Uh, traditional neighborhood development, you can think about having, um, oftentimes alleys, um, tend to have smaller lots, very walkable community. Uh, our TND, uh, ordinance requires commercial be a part of a project, uh, and also advocates for a mix of housing units. We think that this project is a very good fit for the TND zoning category.
All right. Anyone else like to address council? Not, we'll close the public hearing, and that's for a motion. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, um, it, it looks like a very nice development, and it looks like one that's neat going nor, um, going in nor, near me as well. Um, I think one thing that would make citizens feel more comfortable is that we actually could see numbers on how many houses are coming in, how many apartments are coming in. I know previously we've had discussions saying people won't have kids in apartments, but I'll tell you, as someone who's moved around for my husband's job, and when we went, went back to school, uh, for him to get a second degree, w, we would live in an apartment to have our kids in a great school. I know many other people will here, too. And I really appreciate your work on this development. It looks beautiful to have a park and commercial. Um, but it just something might put some citizens at ease if we can have numbers, what's coming in, and what's predicted, and then how it applies to the schools.
It had numbers on there of how many?
Yeah, I know, but like, how many you've all approved?
Oh.
You know, what, what's proposed, what's coming in, because I know it throws people sometimes, too, when it's phase one or phase two, and, you know, it just keeps, whenever.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's all. I, but I appreciate it.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Did we get a motion in a second? We already have a motion in a second.
We did get one?
Yeah. Got a motion in a second.
Did we get a motion in a second?
Let me close the public hearing.
Yeah.
I don't think you had closed the public.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, and that's for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion?
I, I just want to start, um, Mary Beth meets with and talks with the school board and, and Dr. Nichols all the time when it comes to these types of things to get ahead of the game, to let them know what's coming, so they are well aware, because I know your main goal is to make sure that we don't out, uh, outkick our, our school coverage, and so we are working side by side with them on that. Part of the reason that we had an annexation not quite a year ago was to secure land for the last elementary school that we'll need. So it continues to work into the West Side Master Plan, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing, and especially appreciate, uh, the folks that have worked with you to accomplish this because it's come a, a long way, um, with, with your guidance to get to where we want it, so thank you.
I do have a question. Could you please explain the difference between mixed use and the, the town?
And TND? Um, there's actually not a lot of difference. Um, mixed use, oftentimes people think of vertical mixed use, uh, meaning you would have commercial on the ground floor and residential above, but you can have horizontal mixed use. And in the TND district, it allows for both, um, and in fact, in the Village at Oakland Springs, we've got a, uh, vertical mixed use component, which is the apartment project in Village Oakland Springs under construction, where there's going to be commercial on the ground floor and apartments, um, behind. Um, in this particular, um, project, the concept plan shows commercial in the front, and then the for-sale units, the flats, the townhouses, and the single-family behind. But it still functions the same way in that you've got, um, walkability, right? You've got commercial nearby the residential, you've got a mix of units, a mix of uses, which, um, generally is going to be more economically stable, more pedestrian-friendly, reduce, um, the amount of times you have to get in your car to, you know, do an error and that type of thing. But it's very, they're basically the same. The, the nomenclature of traditional, uh, neighborhood development, um, encourages, I'll say, uh, I'll say smaller lots, um, allows for alley-loaded development, things of that nature, whereas mixed use, um, as a general land use category or zoning category, wouldn't necessarily mean that you've got smaller lots or alleys, um, so that you can have, um, your physical layout can be a little bit different on the ground. The uses are the same, but it's just cut up a little bit differently.
Okay, and again, just asking, but as far as commercial, why was it not like zone, let's do this section, zone commercial, and the rest of it residential? Why is it not the way it is?
Why is it all T and, uh, I lost my PowerPoint. So, um, we did look at that, whether or not it made sense to carve out the commercial as, say, B three or B two, and then have the residential be a different category. Um, when we looked at the type of products that they were proposing and then looked at what our zoning categories would allow, this allowed us to get a better product, we thought, by using the TND, which is a more flexible zoning category than if we were to do, let's say, R three or R two along with the B two. So, um, our zoning categories, our traditional zoning categories serve a lot of, uh, they have a lot of utility, and there's a, a purpose to them, but when you're trying to create a different kind of a neighborhood, which is what these developers were doing, they don't really, they're a little too clunky. And so the TND gives us more flexibility with, let's say, having the stack flats area be a little bit denser than we would normally get, but in exchange, we're carving out a whole bunch of open space and commercial land. And so it, um, again, when we looked at our different categories, this was the best tool in our toolbox to achieve the desired outcome. And because Village at Oakland Springs is zone TND, it was a natural extension, a na, natural extension.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any other discussion? If not, can we have the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzin?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Last public hearing item is for proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-four, and this would be amending two sections of our zoning ordinance as it relates to industrial development districts. Um, specifically, what we're doing is proposing a maximum, uh, an increase in the maximum height allowed. So this map shows where the industrial zoning categories are in the city of Madison. You can see they're generally located south of Palmer and east of County Line, um, between County Line and Sullivan for the most part, although we do have got a couple of pockets, um, uh, on either side of Hughes Road. So the changes, um, basically would be to go from allowing a thirty-five foot or a forty-five foot height building, depending on if it's M one, M two, to allowing up to sixty-five feet unless a, um, a property is within two hundred feet of a residential user zone, in which case we'd keep it at thirty-five feet. So the top section there shows our existing M one standard, which you can see is thirty-five feet. We're showing this as a legislative draft, and the, it would be, the thirty-five feet would be replaced with sixty-five feet or four stories, um, except, again, when a lot of butts to a lot with a residential user zoning, they would be restricted back down to thirty-five feet or two stories. Uh, in our M two category, we currently allow forty-five feet in height. Uh, we'd be proposing the same change, that we could go up to sixty-five feet, um, and if we're within two hundred feet, we'd bring that back down to thirty-five instead of the forty-five feet in height. So the, the genesis, genesis of this really was back in twenty eighteen. You'll recall the city hired consultants to do a med, um, an industrial area plan, took a look at our industrial area, looked at improvements that might be needed, whether it be zoning changes. We also- We also took a look at the economics of the area. Since that time, the city has invested in some street lighting. We've worked on paving some of those streets. But one of the other changes that they identified was to update our zoning code with respect to the industrial area. And we started working on our overall zoning ordinance update, but we've sort of put that on a back burner as we've been working on the comp plan. The industrial area plan recommended this change to actually about 60 feet, 65 feet depending upon location. And then as we're working on our zoning ordinance, our consultant for that was also recommending the same thing. But again, we've kind of put it on the back burner. We've got a development on a very large industrial parcel, and they need 55 feet in height. There's been a lot of changes in the way warehouses function now. They have a lot of mechanized equipment inside. They tend to go up because land is expensive. And so they were very clear to us that they needed at least 55 feet to make their building work. So we decided, rather than waiting for the zoning ordinance as a comprehensive update to come forward, we bring this change to you. So we are asking for the 65 feet. Again, it's consistent with what the consultants for the industrial area plan were recommending, what our zoning ordinance consultant was recommending. And again, if a property is within 200 feet of a residential user zone, we'd be back down to our 35 feet. We didn't have any concerns or questions about this at the planning commission meeting, and planning commission and staff are recommending that you approve this. Thank you.
All right, like to open the public hearing. Anyone like to address council? Yes, ma'am.
We already know that we're doing this for one particular project, I guess? Because you said the one project requested it, so can we know what project it is that we're changing zoning for on this? Okay. Where is it? What location is it in town? And what business is it?
I don't know if we, we'll find out if we can tell you that or not. There's times when you can't because we're-
What area are you increasing the height to 65 feet? At least tell us that.
Well, it's in all the different red zones that you saw that were up there when you saw that.
Well, you don't give us a packet anymore. I mean, you're really, really stiffing your constituents. That's all I can say. Because we don't get the packets. If we need to go, we're going to need to print it up. I don't have a, I have an iPad. I can't print it up off there. So how can we see it? Maybe we could put it back up so we could see what streets it, what street, what area? We're going to do 65 feet? I mean, I'm curious.
How long? Highway 20?
In one of those purple areas.
Is it citywide?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to know what area it is, okay? And we're going up to 65 feet. It can go throughout the city. And what particular business are we talking about at the current time? Because you specifically said that if it was a request from some developer. So I'd like to know what we're talking about being developed? How far it can go in the city? You said 200 feet. Can it go on connector areas? Now we got these connector roads. Can it go in a residential area too? Is there more than one of these purple areas in the whole city? I mean, I think that's about all I need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, close the public hearing.
Yeah, we're going to close the public hearing and let Mary Beth address those.
So the industrial areas are demarcated here in purple. We have County Line Road right here. This is Palmer Road. So these two dark, this dark purple area is where, like, the concrete batch plant is here that backs up to the railroad. Then this is where the other concrete plant is here on Palmer Road. This building right here is where the FedEx is under construction right here. This is all of the smaller existing industrial areas. So this is vacant land. This is vacant land that is family owned and not up for development. Here you have almost entirely developed smaller industrial land. So this is Hughes Road right here. So this is where C Y R Cable is, Griffin Aerospace, a variety of different industrial uses. This is Research Boulevard right here, off of Madison Boulevard. So if you go and turn at the light, there's some existing office buildings up on Research Boulevard. So the city has relatively small amount of industrial land. It's possible somebody could ask to rezone land for more industrial. We'd be excited about it, but there's really not a lot of opportunity for that, given the existing development pattern in the city. So with respect to the question about where could this go, right now it's contained to these purple areas. The only residential that is within 200 feet is you've got, this is the Dublin Farms subdivision on Palmer Road that got developed af- well after the concrete plants were there. So it used to actually be industrially zoned. And then you've got, you know, some residential in here, but it's on the other side of the bridge. So there's not a whole lot of residential within the 200 feet of the industrial area. But again, if there is residential within 200 feet, they couldn't go higher than 35 feet, which is what the existing code is. With respect to the current project that we're referencing, I'm not going to be able to give too many details, but whoops, wrong button. But I will say it's located in this area over here, near County Line Road. There is no residential anywhere near the project. It is a large warehouse type project that we are excited about. And it will be very consistent for that area. So we don't think that there's a lot of opportunity for, in our established developed industrial areas for very large buildings, for the most part, because our parcels are so small. Most of the industrial land in Madison consists of very small, you know, less than two acre parcels. There is development opportunity out here, you know, west of where the FedEx building is being constructed, and then ultimately north of that, if that family ever decided to, you know, put their land up. But it's contained to a fairly small area of Madison. I think I got all of Ms. Daly's questions.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
I just have one question. Do we have a fire truck that can reach a height of 65 feet?
We did consult with the fire department, and they did not express any concerns with that, so that's my-
Good deal. Thank you.
Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Engineering.
All right. I just have one item tonight. It's Resolution Number 2022-274R, Authorization of a Professional Services Agreement with CDG Incorporated for Engineering Design for Waltrana Highway and Gillespie Road in the amount of $31,400 to be paid from the engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal.
Good evening. Mr. President, I have four items that are here. First would be Resolution Number 2022-280R. This is for authorization of a subscription to, for renewal agreement with Bentley Systems. This is for EBIT exchange procurement software in the amount of $8,556. This would be paid out of the finance department budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have the first reading of a proposed ordinance, number 2022-287. This is going to be for the sending to the annexation of the Cliff Farms Publix into the city of Madison. What we have here is the exhibit that we have to the proposed ordinance. It shows the area that's being proposed for the annexation. What this would do is it would basically follow, I could actually read from here. It would actually follow the, a small path of tract of land that's right there in front of Chick-fil-A. Does not encompass Chick-fil-A, but follows that track right up the road that takes you right to the Publix, bringing in the entirety of the Publix and the parking lot. However, it is not an annexation of the entire Publix shopping center. It would strictly be an annexation of the Publix property as designed, as you can see here by the red outline. Basically, I believe there was some information provided during work session about the tax base that this would include. And basically, we're just presenting it to the council at this time for the first reading of that and to consider it.
Okay, all right.
All right. Next up, we have Resolution Number 2022-288-R. This is a resolution for authorization for recording and archiving of the October 19th, 2022 work session and special sessions that the council held.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Number 2022-289-R. This is a first reading on the ratification of a funding agreement for Town Madison. We have passed out binders for everyone on the council and Mr. Mayor. What we have here is basically a revised discussion of some of the financials. Mr. Rush Rice is here to discuss those. We also have a copy of the proposed resolution to approve the funding agreement. And we also have, hot off the presses, the newest terms of that funding agreement. We had talked last week during our work session about a funding agreement. We provided that. I was continuing to be, work out a few terms, ironed out. And what we have for you here, I believe, is the closest that the agreement can be to being finalized for your consideration and discussion tonight. What I'd like to do, if you would like, we may need to, I would first, I guess, ask Mr. Rice, he's come up here to talk about some of the revised figures, some of the changes that might have occurred since last week. And maybe he can answer some of the questions as far as financials. Then I'd be happy to step in and talk about the actual resolution itself and some of the terms of the funding agreement.
Sure. Mr. Rice, if you'd come up to the podium, if you don't mind, so we can have your mic, have you on your mic. And I want to go ahead and introduce you to our audience, in case those who do not know. I guess, a couple of years ago, the council engaged your services as an independent financial advisor. And one of the reasons we did that is that when we saw the potential for some type of deal happening with respect to Town Madison and some of the financial documents that were being proposed to the city, we needed an independent analysis. We didn't want to only rely upon those who sell the bonds, who market the bonds, or the underwriters to be the ones to tell us, yeah, this is a good deal. Instead, we saw the need to have an independent financial advisor. So I want to be really clear. You get paid whether there's a deal or not. Isn't that correct?
Hope so.
That's right. And we've been paying you, have we not?
Very promptly.
That's right. And so you don't have an incentive. And one of the things I remembered when we interviewed you, we put out an RFP. We interviewed, we had two finance committee members, our finance director and the mayor, in interviews. And one of the things that I asked you was about examples of when you'd come to city councils and told them, don't do this deal. The numbers don't add up. And indeed, there have been certain iterations of numbers that didn't add up. And we weren't ready to move until the numbers started adding up. So I wanted to make sure that everyone understood what your role is and the independence of the advice that you're giving us, whether we decide to do this deal or not.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. That's a good, you know, a lot of times I go right into a diatribe and people don't know. They go, well, who in the heck is that guy? What does he, what does he do? And sometimes I have to reintroduce myself. I am the president of Rice Advisory. We're a municipal advisory firm down in Montgomery. We have been, I've been in the business of municipal finance for 38 years. My partner has been in the business for about 30 years. We do not underwrite bonds. We don't sell bonds. We do everything but. But we advise municipalities, cities, counties, school systems, the state of Alabama from time to time, hospitals, universities, colleges, in helping those entities make decisions. We were engaged in March of 2021 by the city of Madison to evaluate Town Madison, which is a very ambitious, very impressive project that we found. And it's, we've done things like this. It's very, very, very exciting. This is a project on a big scale. And I think the city was very, was, showed a lot of wisdom to engage an advisor, somebody that, like Renee said, I'm getting paid whether I advise you to do it or advise you not to do it. We'll go, this will, how do I make this work, Jason? Turn it on? These things are hard now.
Slider on the side, yeah, or back?
Oh.
Here comes IT.
These things, no, I've, I've, I got it. Thank you, Jason. All right. I know a lot about muni finance. I don't know anything about this kind of stuff. We got hired and we went through this at the work session last week. So I'm going to, I'm going to go faster, but please, if anybody has any questions, please stop me. This is, in generally, from 35,000 feet, is the city, is this going to be good for Madison? Let's, we're going to take a look at what the developer has told the city. And as the project has evolved, what the developer is telling the city. And as the project leases up, as more and more tenants and businesses go into business, open, how close will this come to funding itself? That's the key element. When you do cooperative district financings or public-private financings, where municipalities engage with private business, the business element of this thing has to pay for itself, unless you have some project that is, if you were a destitute area and absolutely positively had to have some jobs, you might fund it. But this has to fund itself. There are a number of ways this can be financed. One of the things that we're going to do, we come up with a way that now collectively with the city, that would be the cheapest way to finance it. We're trying to get to that magical day when 100% of the tax revenues at Town Madison are flowing to the city of Madison. We also would like to establish a framework where funds immediately begin to flow to the city of Madison. So we've looked at a lot of different financial structures. Finally, if we, if the, if the city decides to move ahead, which we're going, we advise the city to move ahead, we will manage the overall financing project and manage the underwriters and the different lawyers and so forth, and make them play nice in the sandbox and get the financing done. We have been, as we went through this, our initial analysis revealed that what the data that we were getting from the developer was very sound, and we found it to be very conservative. I think it was well done. But we were in the early stages then, you know, a year and a half ago, better than a year and a half ago. There weren't enough revenues out there to support this. So we kind of have waited for a while. As more and more leases are signed, as more and more merchants are going into business, apartment complexes, apartment complexes being sold. So we get to see what the impact on sales taxes, property taxes are going to be. Just a little bit, to get it over the top, a couple of big things. BJ's Wholesale Club out there. And then the Publix annexation puts this over the top so that there is a very high margin of safety in the financing. Now, this is a chart here that we show that the city would go. If you look on the far left column over here, see if I can get this right. This is our estimate of the pledge taxes going forward over a period of time of about 27- twenty-seven years, all right? We have applied to this, which the developer also has, an annual growth rate of sales tax revenue or sales taxes, retail sales at Town Madison, of one and a half percent per year. Uh, there has never been anything in Madison, Alabama, that increased by one and a half percent a year. Uh, the, the growth rates are much higher. However, to be conservative, we've limited the growth here to one and a half, uh, percent per year. If you look here, the coverage, the pledged taxes just from Town Madison will cover the debt service on the debt by initially two times, and then we start, we go two years interest only. That's why that goes down a little bit, but then goes up. That is a wide, wide margin of safety right there. This is with the city doing this with, with a general obligation bond issue. This could also be done with a split of some general obligation debt and some district debt. Now, the thing that's gonna pay this back are city of Madison taxes, right? So we're trying to get to that magical date when this, when all of these tax revenues are flowing to the city and not paying back bonds as quickly as we can. So we get there quicker by doing this with a general obligation bond. We don't advise doing that if it's gonna impact the city's ratings. That's why we have both versions up here, but both work. The, uh, the city version has a higher, a, a wider margin of safety to it. But they both produce, if you look at the ex, the excess revenue, that's the excess revenue that we don't need to pay back bonds, right? If you look down here, over the life of this, that's a hundred and two million dollars. And that's only assuming one and a half percent growth in taxes. Our thinking is it'll be out here in eight or nine years, this is gonna be, all the debt here will be gone. That's a pretty safe assumption. Um, the, we're gonna go through, this is an analysis of all, you can't read it unless you got Chuck Yeager eyes, uh, all of the various tax revenues that will go into this Town Madison project. We have a seven mil county, uh, county tax, then everything else is city, right? What is in blue here are not pledged to any Town Madison bonds, okay? Very important. Because if you go back to here, the unplugged revenues right here, the, these are funds that will immediately flow to the city of Madison that are not pledged to any debt. Also, you have excess pledged revenues, meaning these are, these are pledged revenues that are, that are pledged to debt, but they have nowhere to go because they're exceeding, because we, we have such good coverage here, a margin of safety. So, we think that the margin of safety here is extremely high, such that the risk that the city would ever have to, would ever have to put something in its budget to support any of this debt would be negligible. Um, the, uh, we use only existing tenants, uh, in this analysis. These are a list of them right here. These are tenants that are either already in business or there are signed leases or they're under construction. There's at least a minimum of a signed, executed, closed lease here. So we're not doing anything based on what will be built in the future, any future businesses. And if you ride around out there, you see there's, there's plenty of room for years of, of further development at Town Madison. Um, we looked at a lot of different financing alternatives. Uh, the initial plan was to do it all with a district bond. That's now evolved around where we're gonna do it all with, possibly all of it with a general obligation bond, or possibly with a combination of the two. The reason for doing this, uh, with, is, is to get the interest rate as low as we can get it. Uh, if the city of Madison says, okay, we'll issue general obligation bonds, that interest rate's gonna be much lower than an interest rate secured solely by a, a district that has no taxing power. These are Madison taxes going into this. The, the, the district has no taxing power. The district has no rating. Uh, the city of Madison is one of the highest rated municipal credits in America. Uh, it's one tick below the strongest rating that, that Standard and Poor's and Moody's bestow on anyone. Uh, it is the same rating that Standard and Poor's bestows on the United States government. Uh, that'll make you feel pretty good. Uh, the, uh, anyway, we like this because if we did it all as a district bond, the way that works is that a hundred percent of the taxes have to go to retire the debt as quickly as possible. So the city would get no, no immediate impact from this. Uh, we like, we like this structure for the, for the city because it's immediate positive impact. We show the sources and uses here. This would be a split between the general obligation and the district. Uh, as you see up here, this is a, a total of eighty-five million dollars fees because they are non-rated bonds for the, if, if the district, uh, has to have a debt service reserve fund. And the cost of issuance would be much higher. Uh, capitalized interest is a year's worth of interest because we've still got some things that haven't opened out there yet, that are under construction, that are, that are being built. Uh, the preferred would be, there are no district bonds, okay? We do this all with a, with a city. As you see, it's twelve million dollars smaller. We still do the capitalized interest for a year, and the, and the fees are, are much lower. The reason the fees are lower is because the city's rated double A plus, double A one, and, uh, double A plus, double A one credits don't pay much in fees, uh, because they've got the whole, everybody on Wall Street would do this. Um, what was the, what was the question from?
Go back one.
Back one?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll make this presentation available after it's given tonight. We'll get it out there tomorrow.
Um, this would be the split district, the way it would lay out. This would be, option B, the better, uh, way that we, we would not have district bonds, we would have city bonds. Uh, we think the, the, the city bonds is the, is the way to go. Um, very key. Priority one here is, is minimizing or eliminating, you can eliminate risk. We, but we've been through a global pandemic and seen, uh, many cities, even in Alabama, have flourished, uh, financially during the, some, some have not. Uh, but we came through that. Uh, barring, uh, the, we, we're not, we never say never. There are wars, there are worse pandemics, we don't know. But we think the risk here is added to the city of Madison would be at an absolute minimum here, uh, particularly in what we've done here to create that safety net, the addition of Publix, uh, makes that, makes that really work. Uh, here, we just restated here the, the, the coverage, which is very, which is quite ample. Uh, this is very important here. This is where we talk about, the, these are the unplugged revenues. These are the revenues that are presently, if you look up here in twenty twenty-two, that's already coming out of Town Madison, all right? We're into fiscal twenty twenty-three and we're on target to smash through that number right there, that two and a half million dollar number. Uh, Roger shared with us the actual sales tax collections from out there. Uh, this is the money that comes to the city of Madison, uh, right now. This is immediate impact. Now, these over here, the property taxes, we have this one, uh, this, this, uh, five and a half mils is dedicated toward, I think, the debt on the, on the, the venue out there, the baseball stadium, is that right?
Mayor.
Is the, um, that five and a half mils? We've got a half a mil dedicated to the library. Then we have eleven mils of ad valorem tax and a half a cent of sales tax that earmarked to schools. Uh, that is coming off of Town Madison. That's new revenue. Then we have this revenue that is coming, that is not needed for debt service, and that's coming to the city of Madison as general fund revenue. That, that can be used by the city for any, for any legal purpose, uh, as we, as we say. So the, the, we think the margin of safety is good. And I'll let Brian tell you about what's the funding agreement. Uh, it replaces the existing funding agreement essentially. The city already has a funding agreement. This is a new one, a better one, uh, less expensive, hastens the day when the, when that, when all, when a hundred percent of these revenues come to the city. And if anybody's got any questions, comments, or outbursts of emotion, I'm all ears.
All right. Thanks, Rush.
Thank you.
I was just gonna point out that, uh, the amendment in the Alabama Constitution, seven seventy-two, basically gives some, uh, criteria that this council needs to consider for, uh, for lending. It's, uh, it's credit for these purposes. And basically, as long as they consider things like the expansion of the tax base, increased employment opportunities, uh, tax revenues, lodging, other things that can intact, uh, then the council could, uh, be in position to decide whether or not this in fact affects, uh, is in fact a, uh, what is deemed to be a, uh, let me find the magic word here, that is sufficient for public purpose. So, uh, we've drafted the ordinance for, if you have any, I'm sorry, the resolution, if you have any questions about it.
Yep. I'll just the first reading.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Any, any questions on this?
Mm-mm.
All right. We'll move to planning.
Oh. I did, well-
I think you've got to read about the funding agreement. I don't think you brought that up as far as, uh, D. Did you bring that up yet as far as?
Oh, yeah, you gotta.
Yeah, I think you just at least gotta read that as far as the funding agreement, where we can get it published.
Uh, one of the conditions that, uh, in order for us to, um, report with this is that we have to actually, uh, put forward in, uh, Huntsville Times or a similar publication, an ad that basically, um, details the findings that this in fact does, serves a sufficient public purpose. And, uh, basically, what we'd have to do at that time is basically, uh, provide a description of the public benefits, sought to be achieved by the action, and identifying each individual, firm, and other business entity to whom or whose benefit the city's proposed could lend that credit for. So this is something that we were preparing in conjunction with tonight's discussion and, uh, any other, uh, and we could, we basically detailed what we understand the, uh, the public benefits to be, but if anything else was added to that, we could, of course, you know, draft that ad so that it can be, uh, put in the Huntsville Times.
Anything else? Not on that one.
I saw on that, on the funding agreement.
I do have a question.
Yep.
If I may. I'm turning to the funding agreement. And I don't know if it's still in this draft or the draft that you gave us Wednesday, but is there a two-year, that everything has to be completed within that two years? Is that still in this one?
It is not. It, it was-
There's no, there's no time limit.
Okay, so it's been totally a-
No, it hasn't. It, it's been, uh, edited a, a good bit. There's been some negotiating back and forth. We've got some more favorable terms here and there, uh, but, but it is not in there now.
Okay, yeah, that one really stood out to me, so I think you. I said, is there a time to just go over, like, have to go over construction? Uh, is this a good time?
Sure. If you have any questions as far as construction, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, um, exactly as it now, oh, it now, as it now stands, it's a set price, right? Okay. Is there any kind of overage that's built in? I mean, just looking at, there's so much-
I think I might have created some confusion by, uh, speaking off the cuff. Unfortunately, uh, during the work session, I didn't have the invitation to bid. I just had the submission of the bids. Unfortunately, uh, I had to fill in some gaps and unfortunately, I might, might have misspoken about a couple of them. Uh, there is no provision in this, uh, limiting or expanding how much money that the, that the, uh, that the bidder can, can require the city to complete this project. Basically, the way that it's worked, the way that this one, I've seen some that they, they give a little bump, you know, up to five percent. This is not that. What we have here is this situation. If they go over what they have bid, the amount that they say they can, uh, what it's gonna take in order to build the interchange, uh, we can actually find them in default and we can make a claim against their bid bond. And at that time, we could, we'd be compensated. So as far as a concern that, that someone's just gonna be able to come in, now they bid and they can, may, may have, you know, can just run with extra expenditures, they cannot do that. Now, what we do have is a mechanism that's understood underneath Alabama law and the, uh, Attorney General's opinions that've come out on this, uh, say if you can handle this through the mechanism of those change orders, which I'm sure the council's very familiar with. Uh, but there's a bid law that basically says that anything up to ten percent, uh, is understandable, but it's really up to this body to determine where, where the squill point is. If, if they go a dollar over, you can basically find them in default, you can go to a surety, make a, make a, a claim on their bid bond, and then the surety has to basically pay you for the difference between you going to the second responsible bidder. Now you have to, like, stop, go over here, get these guys, the second responsible bidder, and then that surety can pay the difference. So I think, to answer your question, basically, they're stuck with the bid unless this body finds that they are in default, uh, uh, but they would have to stick to those figures unless y'all decide to consider the change orders that they do present.
Okay. My reasoning is, you know, we're living in strange times and inflation is crazy. Um, I would like to, are we having a contingency put in so there are those funds if things do go, you know, much higher than what they are anticipating? No, through no fault of their own. I mean, I'm not saying they're misrepresenting in any way. I'm just saying the future is a little bit, you know, unclear. Are we mitigating any problems ahead?
Sure. Uh, I, I think, I, I hope this answers your question. I think that, uh, there's understanding that sometimes when you have a, you know, any kind of construction, they bid something to come in, and they may very well, you know, find, you know, a higher price for this, higher price for that. And that's where these change orders come in. So they're just, you know, a case-by-case determination, uh, you as to whether or not this in fact warrants an extra payment or to go above and beyond what was already the top dollar that they bid for. So, uh, although, basically, those change orders are allowed under Alabama law, but at the end of the day, you know, change order by change order, y'all get to decide what, you know, how far they can go over that figure that they bid. And, but they're stuck to that bid amount so long as you, uh, hold them to that bid amount. But if they have some circumstances they can articulate, then you can, you do have the leverage under Alabama law in order to consider those, those change orders as they come in.
Okay. I mean, I'm just looking at unexpected things.
Sure.
I mean, every construction project, um, from what I understand, this is quite a complicated bridge. It's not just, you know, up and over. There, there are quite a few moving parts, so to speak.
And also to answer your question, I think you'd asked a question about liquidated damages, maybe at the last meeting.
Yes, I did.
And I just wanted to confirm for, in, in the entire council's benefit, uh, liquidated damages are over three thousand dollars a day. Uh, so what we got here is basically a project that's supposed to proceed, I believe, uh, five hundred and-
Five fifty.
Fifty days. Um, every day after that, basically, we have calculated what we believe to be our, our damages to be three thousand dollars a day if they extend over that. So, uh, that's a very valuable tool in making sure they stick to the deadlines. And we don't have, the longer these things go on, the longer, uh, that you have more costs, et cetera. So that helps, you know, keep it on, online, um, for, for completion. So I hope that answered your question.
Yeah. Oh, I appreciate that, that's in there. Um, might just sort of clarify, we're gonna have a loan amount of this and any overages that may or may not occur or whatever are gonna come out of general funds? Is that correct? Is that how that's gonna work?
Right now, that would be how they come out, yes.
Okay. I just wanna be clear, so that's how we'll handle that.
Sure. And, and it's gonna be-
If we decide we wanna do a change order.
And you're not gonna-
Okay, yeah, but I'm just-
And, and the way the rules are, are, the way that this agreement's set up, they can't just give you a bill at the end and say, hey, oh, by the way, here's seven million dollars that we compounded over the last two years. Uh, they have to bring it timely as they come up. In fact, they can actually, there's conditions here where they can actually waive a right to a change order if they don't bring it promptly. So basically, as they, they, it, the onus is on them basically to, to identify the problems, bring it to you, and let you know that there is in fact going to be an overage or a problem. They can't just simply run a bill and come back and go, here's our box of IOUs. No, no, we, we would be able to assess it as it happened, and they could actually lose their right, uh, to a change order if they don't bring it to us in a timely fashion.
That's what I understand. I'm just trying to be proactive, looking at it, you know, and to, for their sake and our sake. You know, I don't want them having to go bankrupt because things went so terribly wrong. You know, that's, I'm just looking at it from both sides, I guess.
And all I would add, uh, in response to that is, you know, what we have here is an experienced, reputable, uh, company that's, you know, this, this isn't their first rodeo. They, they're very experienced. Uh, one of the reasons that they were able to get the, uh, the bid bomb that they, bid bond that they have is because they are experienced and they do have a track record of other, uh, similar type of projects. So for that reason, we, we, we don't have, uh, any sort of, that we're, you know, dealing with a, you know, a fly-by-night operation. This, this, this is a very, very good experienced firm that, that should be able to deliver what they promised in the bid.
I'm not doubting any of that. I'm just, the unexpected can happen, and I just want to make sure we're looking at it.
Hmm.
That's all. That's all. Um, I think that was all on the construction. I did meet with Michael earlier today, and he, um, he was very good, and, you know, and, and I've met with Cameron and Robin, who too, just to double check, look at the numbers. And everybody has been extremely helpful, and I do appreciate them as answering all my questions.
And of course, I'll, I would, uh, you know, offer, uh, anytime anybody has a general question about, you know, you know, some of these larger issues that might be outside of, uh, necessarily remain to, uh, the discussion, I'd be happy to talk with anybody about some of the larger things that, uh, to get more detail as far as how we help manage these type of projects in general.
Okay, um, and if I may use this one moment, I just want to let my constituents know that I'm not going to be here on November fourteenth for this vote. Um, after my husband, well, between, when we thought cancer wasn't coming back, we scheduled a trip. And we're going to be going from Rome to Israel during this time. And so, it's, it's only time, I don't, you know, it's something that needs, we need to do this now. We can't wait until April. But I am, I do regret that I will not be here to represent my constituents during that time. And I hope you understand the, the reasoning behind that. We're, we're just not going on a vacation. This is pretty important. So, anyway, I just wanted to make that clear. So, um, when I wasn't sitting here in two weeks, you'd understand why. That's all.
Is there any other actions we need to take on that tonight?
No, this is just the first reading, uh, basically.
Make sure. All right, perfect. Planning.
Thanks for coming up again, Rush.
Thank you, Rush.
Thank you. We missed you.
Yeah, I missed you all too. Um, before I jump into the planning items, if I may just, um, add to, maybe help answer Karen's question. For something like this, um, most likely what we would end up doing is, um, because Roger's very good about this, is, you know, we would, I'll say, set aside a little bit of money to make sure if there are these change orders, um, that, you know, inevitably come up in a project of this magnitude, that there would be money available. One of the ways that we create that pool of money is by, and, you know, setting aside bond proceeds, investing the bond proceeds, and we generate interest from those bond proceeds. And so, we would, that would generate some money, so it wouldn't necessarily have to come out of the general fund. Um, so, it's something that staff would work with Roger, um, you know, at the, the onset of the project to make sure that the city's going to have money if change orders come, come up. Um, for a project like this, where we don't have, like, a hard deadline of when it needs to be finished, we probably wouldn't include a contingency budget. We did have a contingency budget for the ball field because we needed to have the flexibility to be able to make decisions when issues came up in the field. Um, if we take the approach of doing it with change orders, every change order has to come to the council. We lose two weeks every time, right? Or we have the potential. So, there was no way we would have made the ballpark deadline if we didn't have that contingency budget. Um, and, but for a road project, we typically wouldn't put the contingency budget on, but we would still have some money set aside that we know would be available for you all if you decide to approve a change order.
Okay, thank you for explaining that, Maybach.
Sure. Um, okay, so, under planning, we have proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two twenty-eight. Um, this is to, uh, for the annexation. We have a little picture somewhere in our future, uh, but this is for the annexation of that single-family lot at one fifty-one Forest Drive. Um, I don't, you may recall.
Mm-hmm.
It is, it's-
Yep.
Picture if you will, there we go. It's there on the, thank you. It's on the north side of, uh, Forest, uh, and you, um, acted on the zoning earlier this evening. So, there were no issues related to the annexation. It is just one single-family lot.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? Can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item is proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two sixty. This is for vacation of a portion of utility and drainage easement in the rear yard at two twenty-three Coach Lamp Drive. Uh, you had the first reading on this at the last meeting. You can see the area hashed and red there, it's in their backyard. A good portion of their backyard is in an easement. They are looking to do some backyard improvements. All the, um, relative departments and agencies have signed off, we're asking you to approve this.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? Can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Ob- Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Last item is proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two sixty-five. This is just a first reading, but this is also, uh, for vacation of a utility and drainage easement. You can see that dark hashed area there. This is a property that's located, um, on County Line Road, south of where the Walgreens is. And this, um, there's been an adjustment in the lot line, so this easement's no longer needed. Uh, and this is where there is, um, commercial development proposed. No questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Cory, come on down.
I think Teddy would tell you, you're his favorite person of the night.
I got a recuse. Uh, good evening. My first item's Resolution twenty twenty-two two eighty-one dash R, Authorization of Memorandum of Understanding with Four Horsemen LLC for the Provision of Mars Bus Services for the Rail Yard BBQ. Um, this is something we, we've done for the street festival, and, uh, had that request this year, and we were able to accommodate them staffing-wise. Uh, they pay for all the gas and driver overtime to provide buses.
All right, can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, can I get a vote, please?
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tim Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw? Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
My second item's Resolution twenty twenty-two two eighty-two dash R, Authorization of Memorandum of Understanding with Southeastern Climbers Coalition for Providing Signage and Maintenance for Rainbow Mountain Preserve. Um, I was contacted by Andy with the Land Trust. We have a, a problem with bouldering. For those of you that didn't know what bouldering was either. It's rock climbing. We have several people go out there and, and use that area to, to do climbing. Um, he found a, a nonprofit, cost us nothing, that will come out and help that activity happen safely and with little damage to the natural environment. Um, met with them, they put together an MOU, um, Brian looked at it from the city, and we recommend approval.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? If you're not going to get the vote, please.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Member Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. My last item's Resolution number twenty twenty-two two ninety-two dash R, Authorization of Purchase of Playground Equipment in the Amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and eighty-six cents to be paid from the, from the department's budget. Um, as you recall, last, last year in, in fiscal year twenty-one, we added some playground equipment to some neighborhood parks that were in desperate need of it. Um, I put in the budget this year again to, to do that as well. And just got a quick PowerPoint, wanted to run through to give you an idea of what we're looking at doing this year. The first project, we did the Palmer Park extension with ball fields, soccer fields, and, and everything. Um, we left out the playground because we were over budget for that project, um, after our first season out there, um, from several parents, uh, got the request to put that playground in, in as soon as possible. So, we were able to work with Game Time, uh, they're a North Alabama vendor out of Fort Payne that manufactures playground equipment. They make really good stuff, we're, we're really happy with them. We entered into a grant program. If we were able to order before October thirty-first, we, we get a significant savings, um, on, on purchase of this equipment. Um, I couldn't find a Google Earth picture of the, the extension yet because it's so new. So, bear with me, I, I know this is a bad drawing, but the green section, uh,
Mm-hmm.
About fifty-six hundred square feet. Um, we have a structure that's going to go in there. Um, it has some inclusive elements. Uh, the cost of that is a little more than our average playground. You can see the surfacing that's required to make that inclusive, um, it, it's quite a bit. But, uh, I think that'd be a destination playground, especially for people on the west side of, of, of town that really don't have many parks. Second one, speaking of the west side, Hardeman Place Park is our only park west of County Line Road. Um, got a high demand from citizens for, for an upgrade to the, to that play, playground over there. Um, again, got about eleven thousand, uh, cost savings if, if we put that structure in there. Our staff went out and measured, and we'll have to move some things around with the existing playground, but we'll have a new structure over there as well. And the final one, Silver Creek Park, um, Silver Creek subdivision. A lot of people don't even know this is a park unless you live over there. Um, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac, and it's kind of a pie-shaped property, and then got quite a bit of, of land in the back, but they don't have anything. And one of our goals as we move forward was to take the new, or the parks that don't have any playground equipment at all and provide playground equipment over there. Um, the question I'm going to get probably tomorrow before I open my emails, what about my park? Um, the next grant cycle for Game Time's in, in the spring. Um, we're currently working on the Kids Kingdom project. I want to make sure we get that completed because of overruns and, uh, other issues. We have clever works doing the site works, so we're getting significant cost savings with that project. I'll come back in the spring with a plan, maybe just some, some more playground equipment, but I wanted this to shake out first to kind of get an idea of where we're going to be at. That's all I got.
You got a motion?
Uh, move to approve?
Okay.
In a second. Hey, is Game, is Game Time the one that's going to install that?
Yeah.
You buying from them, somebody that's going to install it?
Hey, they'll give us a price by Alabama bid law. When Megan was here and we did it last time, we, we'll have to put that out for bid. We're just purchasing the equipment.
Okay, I didn't know if that includes them installing it.
That cost does include their cost for installing it.
Okay.
And they did install our, ours last time, and preferably, I mean, if the manufacturer knows their equipment best.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Anything else? Can, can, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Di- Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Is there any miscellaneous business or announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
If given the chance, an elected mayor in the city of Madison. You know, it all comes down to roads, schools, creating more sales tax revenue.